Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for indulging me. And good evening and welcome to City Hall for tonight's regularly scheduled City Council meeting. The meeting is called to order, and I kindly ask our city clerk to please take the roll call.
Chuck Brown?
Here.
Mike Bruno?
Here.
Don Cummings?
Here.
Dorothy Flanagan?
Here.
Dean Kilburg?
Here.
Greg Maladra?
Here.
Richard Marx?
Here.
Mary Sino?
Here.
Tom Simoni?
Here.
Ron Singer?
Here.
We have a full house tonight, folks. We begin our City Council meetings with the Pledge of Allegiance, and I would like to ask two of our nominees, Mr. Rittenhouse and Mr. Salamon, to please lead us in the pledge.
(inaudible) 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 (inaudible)
Thank you, gentlemen. A very dramatic entry. Item 3A, ladies and gentlemen, is to recommend the mayor's appointment of George Salamon to the Historic Preservation Commission. And I believe Mr. Salamon is with us. Is that your daughter smiling back there?
Yes, it is.
Come on up to the microphone, Mr. Salamon.
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
Second. Motion made by Alderman Brown, seconded by Alderman Marx. Mr. Salamon, welcome.
Thank you.
The City Council has a copy of your credentials, and you and I corresponded briefly.
Yes, sir.
Please introduce the special guests who are with you.
(laughing) My wife Julie, who's always got a camera handy.
Who's the paparazzi back there?
And my daughter Paige, and my son Trevor.
Wonderful. Paige and Trevor, welcome. Do you want to say anything? How's school so far? You know, now that your dad might be appointed, there is no more school. It's part of the perks.
That works.
That works, does it?
She doesn't look happy.
Any questions or comments from the council? Mr. Salamon, would you like to introduce yourself to us, or those watching and those in the audience? Tell us a little bit about yourself, other than what we already know, of course.
Well, first of all, I want to thank Mayor Burns for the appointment to the commission. I appreciate that, and I appreciate meeting with everybody here to hopefully confirm that appointment. We've been living in Geneva now for over ten years, and we love it here. And I'm looking forward to working with the other members of the Historic Preservation Commission, and to keep Geneva the special place that it is, and that's why we want to live here and stay here forever.
Wonderful. Now, you have a very interesting background.
Well, you know, I come from the automotive industry, and I just, I spent thirty years with Honda Motor Company Limited out of Japan, and decided not to travel anymore and to keep my roots here. But, part of my aspect of that position was image of our corporate look, as far as our dealerships and stuff are concerned, which plays right into what we're looking for is the image in our historic preservation area. So we have certain guidelines we have to adhere to, we have certain things that have to be done to meet these guidelines, and so in talking with Chairman Ross and Mr. Lambert, I explain how that all works, so that this way, everything has got the look it's supposed to have, and that it has what we want and what we expect.
That's great. I've got a 2007 Honda. Can I, uh, it runs beautiful, by the way.
Well, I'm still in the automotive business, but now I'm with various brands, so we can help you, Mr. Mayor.
Excellent, that's good. Any questions or comments from the council, or any one of the audience? If you cannot fulfill your responsibility, the kids take over.
Good luck.
Thank you. Thanks. We do have a motion by Alderman Brown, we have a second by Alderman Marx, all in favor of the appointment of Mr. Salamon to the Historic Preservation Commission. Please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Unanimous.
Thank you, Mayor.
Double your salary.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Let's see if we can go two for two here, Mr. Rittenhouse. If he's here, where is he? Well, this'll be easy then, we can actually talk about the guy. To appoint Mr. Rittenhouse to the Zoning Board of Appeals, may I hear a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Maladra, seconded by Mr. Marx. Mr. Chairman, anything you'd like to say? Chairman Art Candel of the Zoning Board of Appeals helped write the zoning ordinance, correct?
Yeah, that's right. The evil that men do lives after them. Uh, Mr. Mayor and Alderman, I've known Mr. Rittenhouse for quite a few number of years, and socially, although not in business, but I find him to be a very solid-thinking citizen of Geneva, and I think he will help us very much in our deliberations on the Zoning Board of Appeals, and I thank you for your recommendations.
You consider him a friend, Mr. Candel?
Yes, I do.
Now, why would you actually ask a friend to serve on the zoning board of appeals?
How did I find him?
No, no, I'm good. You also have a colleague with you tonight.
Yes, yes, and we were going to recommend him, but, uh, I'll tell you, these telephones don't work anymore. I've been trying the heck to get in touch with him, and I've recently been out of, out of the country.
Oh, yeah? Where you been?
I've been floating down the Danube River.
No kidding?
Yes.
This is part of, like, a security issue, or you just did it voluntarily?
Oh, no, no, I, uh, it was purely for pleasure.
You and Barb?
Yeah.
Wonderful. That's cool.
Very good.
That keeps the noise down at Kenton Court, too, that's good.
It sure did. But I heartily recommend the gentleman, and he's, I'll be seeing him soon, I hope.
Excellent.
And if I can get in touch with him.
He's a good man.
Right.
He's a good man. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have a motion and a second, all in favor of appointing Mr. Rittenhouse to the Zoning Board of Appeals. Please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Congratulations, Mr. Rittenhouse, wherever you are, so. Now, just a word of caution, we have a full agenda this evening, so, on the off-chance anyone wishes to sneak out prior to the business, Mr. Salamon and the kids, feel free to do so anytime, okay?
Back to Mayor Burns.
You're welcome. And bring back Dairy Queen, if you can. Item 3 is Geneva Park District Foundation presentation on Autumn Fair at Peck Farm, Saturday, September 20th, and we have with us the august and well-dressed Alderman Sam Hill.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Welcome, Sam, welcome back.
Thank you. Thought I'd put a tie on to see what it looked like.
That's good. Well, I see the 70s are coming back, that's awesome.
Yeah, some are. And seldom wear 'em either church or on Monday nights to here, to this meeting, the first and third Mondays. Well, yes, it is again time for the Autumn Fair at the Peck Farm Park, which is on Caneville Roads. The date will be September 20th, and we're starting at 11:00 a.m., and we'll finish probably around 4:00 or 5:00 p.m. The information says three, but I know that the kids don't want to give up. We have pony rides available, musical entertainment, games, family crafts, birds of prey, and a moon jump this year. So we also have an opportunity for people to test their luck and place a bet for $5 on one of about thirty items that we have available in a brochure that I carry with me and the left for everybody here. Quite a few of the Aldermen have already contributed to the Peck Farm Foundation and cast their vote for the item that they want to win, in case their, their number is called out of the buckets that we have on display at the Peck Farm. So if anybody needs further information, please call the Park District, call me, I've got some little flyers that I can hand out, I'll put on the table outside, so people can pick them up as they leave. Do you have any questions?
Sam, how long you been on the Park District Foundation Board?
Since its inception.
No kidding?
Maybe fifteen, sixteen years, I don't know. It's a long time.
And what's your role, what's your role of this year's fair?
Uh, out of town.
Really? It's gonna be a banner year.
First one ever.
No kidding? Where you gonna be?
Well, my wife is taking me to some town by the name of Champanerban.
Oh, good lord, you're gonna go watch the quintessential American sport?
Well, we hope somebody shows up other than the quarterback. As well as the quarterback, because we think we found one, but...
For those of you who don't know, Sam's a huge University of Illinois fan. Actually played football there, correct?
For about one year, yes, Mr. Mayor.
Isn't that something?
Yeah.
Different days.
Different days. Small guys could play there.
Not comfortable.
Ask him with Red Grange.
Yeah, the city attorney wants to know, what was Red Grange really like?
Well, my dad used to tell me that he was quite a guy. Because my dad played...
Let's ask the former city attorney, excuse me, I wanted to...
My dad played football at Illinois, 1921, '22. And then I think Red, as they called him, played in that wonderful game against Michigan. What was that, in '24, Chuck? I think it was.
I don't know.
Do you remember that? You're the only one in the room that could remember it. But it was, yeah, he was quite a guy, I've met him, and, uh, when he was still alive, and he was a good friend of my father's, so...
That's neat.
Yeah, it was, it was a great...
Carolyn goes to the games with you?
Uh, yes, yes, strangely enough. Yes, her, some of her sorority girlfriends are having a reunion, and...
Good lord.
So I have to drive the car and make sure that they get back to their hotel rooms.
Just like Sam, heading to a sorority party.
Yeah, and then a couple of weeks later, she drives the car, because it's my guys.
Ah, well.
So, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, good to see you, Mr. Hill.
That's good.
That was mean, Mr. City Attorney, this is...
Well, we are fellow Illinois graduates, so we, it was all in good, good-hearted fun.
ILL? There you go.
Item 4 is amendments to the agenda. Are there any amendments this evening from any member of the council? Item 5 is the omnibus agenda. All items marked with an asterisk are considered to be routine by this council, and be, can be considered by one motion. Is there such a motion?
So moved. Second.
Alderman Bruno makes the motion, Alderman Simonian, Alderman Simonian makes the second. Any questions or comments? Mr. Clerk, please take the roll.
Ron Singer?
Aye.
Chuck Brown?
Aye.
Mike Bruno?
Aye.
Don Cummings?
Aye.
Dorothy Flanagan?
Aye.
Dean Kilburg?
Aye.
Greg Maladra?
Aye.
Richard Marx?
Aye.
Mary Sino?
Aye.
Tom Simonian?
Aye.
The omnibus agenda passes unanimously. We skip down to item number 10, municipal bills for payment. We kindly ask our city clerk to read the bills for consideration in their aggregate this evening.
When I find them, where'd they go? All right, we'll get them here. Here we go. Uh, bills for payment, total four, $478,552.87.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve and pay the bills, as read. The individual invoices that add up to that total can be found in the packet for tonight's meeting on the city's website.
Second.
Alderman Brown makes the motion to pay the bills as presented and available on the city's website and in our packets. Alderman Flanagan makes the second, and just for clarification, this does include bail money for Sam Hill. Now, Carolyn's a good person. There's not enough money in the county to get Carolyn out of... Mr. Clerk, if I could trouble you to take the roll.
Ron Singer?
Aye.
Chuck Brown?
Aye.
Mike Bruno?
Aye.
Don Cummings?
Aye.
Dorothy Flanagan?
Aye.
Dean Kilburg?
Aye.
Greg Maladra?
Aye.
Richard Marx?
Aye.
Mary Sino?
Aye.
Tom Simonian?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. We jump down to item H, that's item 11H on the agenda. 11H is to consider ordinance number 2014-25, amending Section 2, Residential Area Development Standards, Paragraph F, setback requirements, building envelopes of Ordinance Number 1997-24B, a special use as a mixed-use planned unit development for the North Riverfront Redevelopment Project, to increase the allowable floor-area ratio from 0.5 to 1.0 for lots 4 through 8 in the North Riverfront Planned Unit Development.
So moved.
Motion by Singer.
Second.
Alderman Simonian makes the second. This matter is on the floor for discussion or questions. Considerable debate was had last week regarding this matter. If there's any new and relevant questions or comments from the council, I'll defer to the council. Anyone from the audience? Yes, sir. Welcome back.
Thanks. Eric Weck, 100 North River, Unit 102. I won't go through everything that we went through last week, just want to reiterate some of the assumptions and thoughts that the majority of the folks at 100 North River have. The majority of the forty owners in the building would object to the size of the proposed structure as stated. We have the feeling that the, the FAR as it was stated was not incorrectly stated, and it was not an oversight, that since the FAR is the only specification that relates the structure to the size of the lot, it should not be overridden for other building specifications, and we feel that to say that it needs to be doubled from a presumption that it was an oversight at the time, we feel is incorrect. One of the major concerns we have is with water drainage from what will be the gutters and downspouts of the proposed structure. As the builder of 100 North River, as the same builder of the proposed structure, did not provide adequate drainage at the existing 100 North River building, that resulted in the owners spending $12,000 to improve the drainage. We currently have no reason to believe that the issue will be adequately addressed for this new structure, have yet to see any sort of analysis around how under storm flow the existing tile system would hold up under the current building's own need for drainage, as well as the drainage from the new structure. The builder suggesting that they would be able to possibly tie into the drainage, drainage system at 100 North is not really something that can be, which can be considered as the, the current drainage system at times is unable to handle the drainage as it currently exists without the additional runoff that would be seen from the new structure. We do appreciate that the builder did take the time to meet with us one time, and there were statements made in the last meeting around the relevance or the representation by individuals possibly not being from the condo association. Everybody who spoke last week, other than one of the neighbors, represented themselves appropriately as part of the North River Association. In general, the group feels that smaller structure in height and footprint, perhaps a single-family home, would be the best alternative to provide the builder with a return on its investment, as well as maintain the integrity of the neighborhood. And that's all I had to say.
Thank you, sir. Any questions or comments for our guests?
Just a comment, Mr. Mayor, I, the gentleman referred to the term FAR, and just for the viewing public, that's a term for the floor-area ratio, the, so the acronym for, for that term.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Anyone else from the audience? Yes, ma'am. Welcome. Take your time.
Hello, Mr. Burns. Mr. Brown, our two Aldermen, who have been kind enough to respond. I'm not going to go over a lot of things that we have hashed over before.
Madam, could I trouble you for your name, please, in your address?
I'm sorry, I forgot, see?
That's okay.
My name is Ann, I thought everybody knew me. My name is Ann Stagner, 100 North River Lane, Unit 302, and I'm a first-time Angler.
Excellent.
I have a question for you. How many of you have actually seen the lot we are talking about? Okay, how many of you agree with the size of building that Sho Deen wants to put up?
(inaudible).
Would you like to live there? Can I sell you my unit? It's right out the window. I mean, I, we could have coffee, but that's about it. My question is, how much, we're, we're being told this building is going 34 feet high instead of 35, they're giving us 10 in the back instead of seven, one car garage is instead of two. That doesn't solve the problem, really doesn't. That building is going to be there forever. So it's like, do you want to live there? How many of us have invested our life savings and put it in there? Many of us. How much taxes do we generate? Over $280,000, the city of Geneva gets, and not one student. The only other match to that is 200 North River Lane. Take that into consideration, and take it to the bank. What I'm saying is, the 0.5, we haven't even seen plans for that. We've only seen plans for the 1.0. Is that fair? What do we have to compare it with? I don't know, I'm just saying, think clearly, because it means a lot to a lot of us. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, madam. Anyone else in the audience? Yes, sir. Welcome back.
Hi, I'm Jack Holsher, 128 North First Street in Geneva. I guess I only have one point, and I got thinking about the point that we've made about review by the Historic Preservation Commission, and with the contemporary standards and contemporary members. As I understand it, this building was approved back in, I think, 2004. Question I would have is, what floor-area ratio was considered by the Historic Preservation Commission at that time? If it was 1.0, it's an error. If it were .5, which it should be, the building wouldn't comply. So I don't see how the previous findings by the Historic Preservation Commission have probative value in this case at this time. It's the only point I'd make at this point. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Holsher. Alderman Bruno?
I can, I can speak to that point, because I was on Historic Preservation at that time. Floor-area ratio, which is sort of an arcane measurement, generally doesn't come before Historic Preservation, they don't do that type of mathematics, it's, it's overall height, which, which we did look at. And I, I think in my note to you, too, that the, you know, Historic Preservation maybe isn't, you know, super excited about the plan, but it is substantially less than what the, what the PUD was defined to accommodate. But, to, to the point of floor-area ratio, that, that never gets brought up in, in Historic Preservation.
Well, just to respond to that, the floor-area ra, that's the building... Jack, could I trouble you to join us again in the microphone? We've got somewhere in the neighborhood of 17 million people viewing in, and we want to...
Well, just to make, I, I don't want to belabor this, I know everybody's probably tired of the issue, but the, if I, I looked at the plans, and it looks to me like the total floor area of the building proposed is 3,914 feet, but in accordance with the Geneva ordinance, it does not include the basement or the garage, so it's really larger than that. But the drawings that were submitted in connection with this project, total 3,914 feet, almost 4,000 feet. A floor-area ratio of .5 would be, I think, 2,571 feet, so it'd be about... So the point is, if the Historic Preservation folks looked at it, they were looking at, and it's been testified that this was an exact duplicate, then they were looking at a building with, with 4,000 square feet. But the ordinance at the time called for a building of half that. So, I mean, I, I don't know what they look at, but I, I would think that would be a basic consideration.
Anyone else in the audience this evening on this matter, item 11H? Anyone else from the dais? Alderman Simonian?
I have a question. David, I don't know if you can answer it or not, regarding the, the drainage at 100 North River. I mean, do you know anything about that inadequate drainage, as the gentleman had spoke earlier?
I, I don't, I know the applicant has been working with our engineering division on trying to come up with a solution for the drainage.
That, on...
Along the east side of the property.
On the existing side, okay.
Brian, do we have any more information than we had last week, or?
I have not seen a site plan yet, so...
So we have not gotten into the detailed building permit review yet. And just to speak to the last point, typically, the Historic Preservation Commission is not reviewing zoning compliance, they're reviewing materials, design, overall bulk and mass. The, the mistake in 2004 was that staff, the staff review did not catch the, the overage in the FAR. I know site drainage is always concern with any new development, so it won't be any different with this one, but I have not seen a site plan yet for the proposed development. I know that we'll be looking at it very carefully to make sure that there are no negative impacts to the existing properties.
This gentleman speaking is our city engineer, Mr. Brian Schaber.
I just have a question. What guarantee would we have that they do this properly? Because the last time, after Sho Deen sold all the condos, that was it. So we were left with a $12,000 bill, and I sent that proposal to Dave, and it was approved and amended by our president at then, at that time, John Brooks. What do we get? Do we get anything in writing that they will take over this and fix it, or just that the city's going to approve it?
With respect to the engineering, madam, Mr. Schaber, I could attempt to answer that, but in essence, Mr. Schaber as a PE, right?
Yes, sir.
As an accredited and certified engineer, will have to sign off on all plans prior to, if this should be approved, any construction. It's Mr. Schaber's reputation on the line as well. His signature is, in my humble opinion, the good housekeeping seal with respect to that development and all related engineering issues. And of course, Mr. Schaber represents the city of Geneva, so if in fact there's an error, then we're all responsible. So, Mr. Bruno?
As long as we know where we can go, there's a problem.
Yes, ma'am.
And Brian?
I believe there won't be.
Correct.
But you never know. I mean, strange things happen. We've had a flood in there, too, because that structure, that, that land is on a slope, and it comes down into our building, and then it flows into our stairwell and into our garage. We've had a flood. We know what it's like. That's why we're so concerned. And everybody's cars are now there, too.
Understood.
So, I mean, it's a big area to consider. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, Brian, correct me if I'm wrong, but whether the building is one story or five stories, drainage is to do with lot coverage, so bringing it down to one story wouldn't affect the drainage from that parcel, is that...
That's a fair assessment. Depending on the impervious area, the rooftop, you know, whether it's one story or three stories, the rooftop is, is what we look at.
Thank you.
Anyone else from the dais? Alderman Brown?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will continue to vote no. I was present during the long and complicated negotiations that led to the North Riverfront PUD, and at the time, I remember thinking about what was advertised as the transition zone between the condominiums and Route 31, and this building, to me, is somewhat more massive than what I considered we were going to see in the future at that time. Beyond that, I have no other comment. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else from the audience or from the dais? We do have a motion on the floor, we do have a second, just for everyone's benefit. A simple majority vote carries the vote. A roll call is in order. Without further ado, I'll ask the city clerk to please take the roll call.
Ron Singer?
Aye.
Chuck Brown?
Nay.
Mike Bruno?
Aye.
Tom Cummings?
Nay.
Dorothy Flanagan?
Aye.
Dean Kilburg?
Aye.
Greg Maladra?
Aye.
Richard Marks?
Nay.
Mary Sino? Tom Simoni?
Aye.
The motion passes with seven affirmative votes, three votes against. The project is approved. We jump down to item 11I. Consider ordinance number 2014-26 amending Exhibit 7 permitted uses for the commercial tract of ordinance number 89-48, a special use as a mixed-use planned unit development to allow, quote, "tattoo shops," end quote, as a special use, and two, granting a special use to allow a tattoo shop for the real property located at 1871 South Randall Road, Unit E.
So moved.
Point of order.
Yes, sir.
Did you say 1671?
Eighteen, forgive me. We have a motion by Alderman Marks?
Second.
We have a second by Alderman Simoni. This matter is on the floor for discussion. As previously stated on the item just discussed, this matter was discussed at length last week as well. Before we begin debate and discussion, I will turn this floor over to our city attorney, Mr. Radovich, who has information for us based on documents we received on August 29th from some of the property owners in the condo association.
Last Friday on the 29th, the city received, I received, a copy of a notice of protest that was filed by two property owners in the Glen Eagle condominium project who were protesting this application based upon a state statute that permits owners adjoining the property subject to a rezoning to object and therefore to require the city council to approve a project based upon an extra majority vote, a two-thirds vote. Facially at that time, it appeared that that protest might apply. Of course, that was right before the Labor Day weekend. I've examined this more closely. The two property owners are unit owners in that condominium project. Condominiums, by their very nature and definition, are a different form of real estate. In my opinion, the protest under this statute would have had to be filed by the condominium association, because the unit owners are owners of the airspace of their unit, but the mortar, the land, and so forth is owned by the association. Now admittedly, the unit owners comprise are members of that association, but from, in my view, from a legal standpoint, the actual frontage would have been technically owned by the association, and therefore this protest would not be valid to require the two-thirds vote. So my recommendation that the action or the recommendation for the council at the COW meeting would proceed tonight with a simple majority vote to approve the text amendment, and then you have a, if that is approved, then there's a subsequent special use to be considered.
Any questions for the city attorney from the council? Any questions from the audience regarding the city attorney's comments? Mr. Storm, welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, city council. I just want to be brief about this. I did have a discussion with Mr. Radovich about this issue, and he and I differ in our interpretation of this. The covenants and declaration, in addition to giving the condominium owners and the individual owners rights in that association, also give them an undivided interest in all of the common elements, which are the real estate that Mr. Radovich referred to. In addition to that, as you may recall from our presentations last week, the unit owners we're talking about are the owners of units A, B, and C. Oddly, there is no unit D in this condominium, and then Mr. Bettini owns unit E. So it's our position that this is a semantical issue anyway, that the unit owners who are objecting represent a six, nearly a 60% majority of the unit ownership anyway within this condominium association. It's not a, this is not a large association. There are only potentially three occupants that could be in these buildings anyway. So I just want to indicate that we sort of respectfully disagree with Mr. Radovich's legal opinion about whether or not the protest is sufficient. That's my comment with respect to the, and for the record, my name's Peter Storm. I represent the owners of unit C. My office is here in Geneva. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Storm. Anyone else regarding the matter just discussed prior to discussion on the issue at hand? We have the city attorney's recommendation of how we should proceed with respect to a vote, but prior to that vote, is there any comments or discussion regarding item 11I?
Questions, Mr. Chairman?
Alderman Brown?
I believe the city attorney referred to two parts to this. Are these two separate, would he recommend this be two separate motions?
I was going to ask that clarifying question as well. At least that's how I interpreted the city attorney's remarks, and I conferred with Mary.
It was not, well, there is a text, Mr. DeGroot's back there, is a text amendment, correct? David?
There are two parts to the application. The first would be to amend the PUD to allow tattoo parlors as a special use, and then the second would be for a special use for that specific location.
Part two doesn't happen if part one is not approved.
Correct.
And because it was a committee of the whole action, obviously not binding per se, so--
Does the motioner agree that his motion applied only to part one of this item?
The motioner was Alderman Marks.
Is that what we need, Attorney Radovich? Do we need it split? If we do--
Yeah, it's an amendment to the PUD ordinance.
Okay. Fine, I will amend the motion.
In that PUD ordinance, so I think your motion tonight would be to first address the text change to the PUD ordinance.
Friendly motion accepted?
Yes.
Seconder concurs? Alderman Simoni?
Yes.
Yes.
No prompting.
My God, if there's two of you.
Aren't we lucky? So this is just for clarification?
We're discussing the amendment to the PUD.
So we're going to have two motions?
Yeah, well-- If number one fails, number two is unnecessary.
Right, but last week, this is not how we handled it last week in the COW meeting.
That's correct.
So does that impact this at all?
No, it does not.
Okay.
Since the COW meeting's not an enacting body, if you will.
For clarification, Mr. Chairman, the first part of the motion, which we have on the table, would then allow this special use anywhere in this PUD, not just this particular location. The second part of the motion then grants it for a specific location?
No, 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 sir. It would purportedly amend the text as a special use. You'd have to still make an application--
But anywhere within the PUD.
Within the commercial portion, yes.
Yes. The second then grants it for a specific location.
That's correct.
Okay. So one is generic to the whole commercial section of this PUD, the second one is specific to a location. Thank you.
Everyone clear?
No.
Is Alderman Flanagan?
I think I'm clear, but I just wanted to, but the entire PUD is only this property, is that correct?
No.
No. The PUD encompasses all of Eagle Brook?
No.
Okay. And I'm very unclear.
Radovich was hired for the brother--
You have a commercial planned unit development, which is basically, correct me if I'm wrong, west of Bent Tree Drive. That portion is the commercial area.
The commercial tract begins at Randall and Fabian for the Eagle Brook PUD and goes all the way up to the railroad tracks along Randall Road.
Okay.
What's west, east of Bent Tree is the residential portion. That is not affected by this amendment.
Okay, thank you.
Proposed amendment.
Alderman Bruno?
And it is, just so I'm clear too, as long as--
There is a diagram in the packet. What page is that, Mary? Just in case.
It was in the COW packet.
The COW packet, okay.
The, the plan commission did put a restriction to this special use, not to the property, but to the potential owner of the business, is that right?
Correct.
So if this business goes out, that special use disappears.
Correct.
And then the process starts again if someone else wanted--
Right, but what's on the table presently by the amended motion is consideration of the text change to the PUD, not the special use application that would come after if the text is amended by this council.
I think Mr. Bruno's question was predicated on if item one should pass--
And we have to vote.
Right. Yeah, then the special use applies to this particular applicant in that particular space.
Correct.
And then if it, and then once that business were to go out, if it does pass here tonight, if it goes out, it's like it never happened. Is that, or is there still, it's still approved as a special use in that?
In the PUD.
The PUD.
The special use for that location would go away if that condition were in place, but the PUD would already have been amended, so another applicant could come in and apply for a special use without having to amend the PUD as well.
Okay, so it'd still be the public hearing?
Correct.
Okay. Well, as long as I have the floor.
Alderman Maladra, do you--
I gotta speak at some point, I don't--
Alderman Brown?
I'll follow Mike, that's fine.
Okay, Alderman Maladra then Brown for a second time?
Oh, good. Are you done?
I can come back at the end, that's fine.
Oh, I thought, I'm sorry, I thought you were joking. Forgive me, Alderman, your floor is yours, forgive me, sorry about that.
Well, as long as I have the floor. There's been a lot of machinations about this, and, you know, I, as I've said before, I generally defer to the appointed commissions on these types of matters because they have the focus and they have the expertise. Excuse me. The, I'm confident that they've addressed traffic, parking, property values, character. Honestly, what it comes down to is, with me is, there seems to be a prejudice against the type of business, and I get that. I came, I come into this with all, you know, same visions of the blighted inner-city tattoo parlors. Cultural, culturally, tattoos are not what they used to be. That I, that I see this preconceptions of the, of the type of business. It seems an unfair prejudice after, after my thinking about it long and hard, and I generally have to side with the person that's the recipient of that prejudice if I find it's unfair. That's not any endorsement of tattoo parlors. I generally think having a tattoo is probably a, generally a pretty, they had a long-term decision, but, you know, I have to vote my conscience, and I think, I think if there's some unfair prejudice, I have to try and address that grievance. Thank you.
Alderman Maladra?
See, I missed a pretty good meeting last week, so I already apologized to the mayor. I apologized to all of you for not having been here. I did get to miss Tom's joke at the beginning, so that was okay, that was worth it. On this issue, see, I disagree with Mike. I don't think it has anything to do with a prejudice. In fact, the way I look at it, doesn't have anything to do with a tattoo parlor, period. This could be a request for a special use for the tooth fairy to operate in this portion of the building. What I'm looking at is that a small minority interest in an owner-occupied property is requesting a change that the majority interest in the owner-occupied property supposes. And you talk about voting your conscience. My conscience would not be clear if I forced that change on the majority owners who object to it. I'm not asking why they object, that's between them. You know, the fact is, they bought into this property under a special use ordinance that existed at the time. They had no reasonable, some reason to believe that that special use would change, and now we're being asked to force that change on them, and I just think that's wrong. I'm not going to say one way or another what I feel about tattoos. If I have one, I certainly wouldn't reveal it. But I don't think tattoos are the issue here. In fact, I think we made far too much out of that specific point and far too little on the part about the expectations these people had when they bought into their property. They're not tenants who are renting. These are owners of a property that did their homework, and they found that the circumstances they bought into were X, and there was no reason for them to believe that X would change. So I'm going to oppose the motion. Total silence.
Before I recognize Alderman Brown for a second time, anyone else who has not yet spoken wish to speak from the dais? Alderman Brown?
I'm going to speak in favor of the first part of this motion, the motion which is on the table at the moment, which is to improve, approve this as a special use within this PUD, because I fully believe that special uses can be approved if circumstances change, if conditions change. And I now believe that tattoo parlors are an acceptable thing in our modern society, and there are probably regions within this commercial PUD where it might be quite acceptable to many people to put a tattoo parlor. And since the first part of this motion only addresses the question of whether special shoe, tattoo parlors should be added as a special use to this particular commercial PUD parcel, I'm in favor of it. So I will vote yea on the first part. And when the second part comes up, I will want to speak to that. But we only have the first part of the motion on the table at the moment.
That's correct. From the dais, anyone else? From the audience?
Good evening, my name's John Cooney. Cooney Corso in Moynihan, we're out of Downers Grove. We're a law firm, we represent Bob and Nancy Christ. They're doctors. They run family eye care. They ran family eye care on St. Charles and Randall Road over by the tobacco shop. They're just north of Roosevelt. They selected this location to move up into a better community. In doing so, they were looking for a year to buy this property, performed a great deal of due diligence, looked into what the uses were. They got a title report that set the uses. They set forth the annexation agreement that limited the uses to Exhibit 7 on the annexation agreement, also Exhibit 7 to the ordinance that is being, as on the table right now, is to being amended. And those uses were B2 zoning, and they had exceptions to it. Exceptions were clubs and taverns and lodges and taxi stands and bus stops and other uses. You have to look at the intent of the individuals who created this, the Kind Corporation, when they, when they started this project. And this is a 40-acre project. It goes from Fabian and Randall to Bent Tree, I think it is, Bent Tree Lane, all the way down, that all those, all those condominium associations, you'd be changing the use on the special use for them with only notice to a handful. The two other owners in the unit we're talking about, some of the neighbors and the ones within, I think, 250 feet, not all, the people in the subdivision. The ordinance, a question, Section 3A1 of it stated uses for the commercial tract, and it read, "Those uses in Exhibit 7 attached here to and made a part here shall constitute the permitted uses." You look at Exhibit 7, it says, "The following uses shall constitute permitted uses." They use the word "shall," "shall" being mandatory. Those were the uses that we believe, we had detrimental reliance on what that was. Now, this wasn't bought years ago. This was bought February 14th, 2014. Spent hundreds of thousands of dollars for the building. It was never used before. Hundreds of thousands of dollars in renovation. of thousands of dollars in renovation, and six weeks later, this petition's on the table to change that. There was a reasonable expectation that it wouldn't be changed. So we're asking that this panel, this board, deny the amendment to the, to the ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cooney.
Can I ask for a clarification?
Please do.
From the city attorney. Right now on the floor is an amendment to the plan unit development. If that vote goes yes, we've changed that plan unit development in perpetuity, or, I mean, does that change, that is the vote, to change that plan unit development for all that property, correct?
To create a special use category?
Which will allow tattoos on any, which will allow people there not to have to go through the plan unit development process?
Apply for a special use.
Just the special use. So it will, from going forward, this, that special use then will be attached to every piece of property up and down Randall.
And the special use could be amended through future public hearings?
Correct. I just wanted to make sure that even if, if the first part passes, that's permanent, we're, we're changing that plan unit development even if part two doesn't pass, if it goes to that point. Correct. Okay.
Alderman Flanagan?
And, and then to further ask for a clarification, that would mean that if the second part failed, the applicant can come back and reapply based upon our, if we in fact change the first part of our motion, or vote affirmatively for the, for the changing, is that not correct?
Except I believe that there's a limitation of a year.
I think so.
Before you can reapply, David? If you deny.
I think that's correct, that you cannot reapply for these, the same exact request, but if it was altered, you could reapply within that year timeframe.
But it's, it's got to use for that category, and I suppose it's a different property.
A different property or a different space, or, yeah.
Or not at the same location?
No, I, the same location could be applied for, in this, like, in this instance, it's only for half of the unit. If they were to reapply for the whole unit, I think that would be a different application that could be considered.
Alderman Bruno?
Re-reclarification here. I thought I had answered before, and it could be the difference or change in my vote. Voting on the first item passing, the, the PUD's amended, there's a special use in the text. So anytime in the future, any other tattoo parlor can come in without the plan commission?
No, it's a special use application.
Okay, so it's.
It requires a public hearing before the.
Okay, so this is just, this is having just done the ground.
Mike was not. If the text were changed and applications came in for that particular special use, it would require a public hearing with, with notice before the plan commission to be, get a recommendation as to the special use, and the city council would then consider that recommendation.
Okay, so this, this is just the groundwork for the text. Okay, I think, I think I've got it. Thank you.
Alderman Simoni, and then Alderman Brown?
My position from last week didn't change, even though there's two motions now. The, I'm a firm believer of personal property rights, I think the whole tattoo thing is a, is fine with me. I think Mr. Guilen has proven that he's a very, let's see, positive asset to the community if he so chooses to put his tattoo parlor in, in our, in our community, I'd, you know, I'd support that effort, and, but the personal property right part of the equation, I just can't, can't, doesn't trump this whole situation. So I don't have a problem at all with, and I'm assuming it's in the B5 district or the, for this motion that, for, to allow a tattoo parlor.
No, we need to clarify that.
No, it's in the PUD.
Just that PUD specifically.
I think B5 is solely PUDs, is it not, for the most part? David?
I have to double-check the zoning map, but the great majority of the B5 district is within established plan unit developments.
Okay, so I, I mean, I, I support allowing a tattoo parlor, you know, but just not in this particular location. And quite honestly, in the future, my position would never change that if it's owner-occupied, those owners have trumped individual business rights, in my opinion. Now, if a tenant, a single, or a single landlord owned 20 spaces and he or she so chose to allow a tat, that's his or her choice, and that's a battle they have to take up with their, with, with his tenancies, not, not here. But here, I believe that we, we owe it to the owners to support their effort, especially since they walked into this situation knowing that this was not part of the rules. Moving forward, the next set of owners now know that if it dispasses, that, that tattoo parlors are a special use, but they still have to go through the process to get approved, so. I'm totally in support of you becoming a, a business in Geneva, but just not at that location, unfortunately. Thank you, Mayor.
So a question, clarification for me.
Sure.
So I agree with what Tom said, I think we're saying the same thing. In order for the possibility to exist, that this type of business can go somewhere else, maybe in a, in a area that's single-owner with 20 units or whatever, would we not first support the first motion as Alderman Brown is, and then deal with the second one, or?
That, that is correct, however.
However, okay.
The special use still applies.
Right.
So irrespective of whether we decide to amend the PUD from Fabian to Fargo.
We still have to talk about a specific special use request.
Absolutely. Via the plan commission?
Yeah.
Then back to the committee of the whole.
This is not amendment to the B5 zoning classification either, I don't want, it's only this PUD.
Yeah.
But it's a fairly large PUD.
Yeah, it's pretty big, I'm looking at it.
I mean, it's huge.
Yes.
And for those of you tuning in and listening, the PUD extends from Fabian Parkway all the way to Fargo Boulevard.
And north to the bridge.
Yeah, exactly, Bent Tree on the east, Randall Road on the west, so.
My, my only concern is, is I don't think I realized that last Monday night when we looked at this, and I really don't know how those other owners feel of all those properties up and down that road. I thought we were just dealing with a separate plan unit development of that one building. I, I really have a problem voting yes for it tonight, changing a whole plan unit development when I haven't heard from any of those other owners of how they feel. I mean, that's a pretty big change, to change a special use when there's three or four other buildings up and down that road with, I don't know how many owners there are, I don't know if it's all condos, or if each individual, you know, group is owned by one, but I personally have a problem without at least having those, those owners know that we're looking at changing that planned unit development, I'm not sure if they were made aware of that.
Which brings up my point, question, Mr. Mayor and Mr. Attorney. The attorney did mention the fact that this is a change to a PUD, and the members of that PUD have not been notified. Can we actually do that?
No, that's fine. There have been, there has been a notification via publication, and that's typically been the, the method in which the city has notified on text amendments. They're treating the text, this text amendment to this PUD like they would treat any other text amendment to the zoning ordinance. So there is some question about whether or not there should have been a specific.
Typically, we mail letters to everyone within 200 yards or some such number.
250 feet.
That's for, that is for a special use or a map amendment.
Okay. But in this case, it's an amendment to a PUD agreement which applies to people over a two, two mile north-south.
And I acknowledge that that, you know, there, there are, there is some case law out there that questions whether the propriety of publications versus actual notice, Supreme Court in the city of Zion case about four or five years ago, but the, the practice here is treating it as a text amendment. As we would a text amendment with any.
So your recommendation was we can proceed with the first of these two motions?
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Cooney, please.
With all due respect to Mr. Radovich, there was a mailing that's sent out, it included two dozen, 30 places that were all within 250 feet of the building in question, which would be subject to part two of this vote, not the.
Yeah, but not to the whole.
Best Bu, or not the Best Bu, what's, the Home Depot, the other people on the southern end of Bent Tree Lane, the one, two, three, four, five, six other condominium or unit or building in that location. So it seems to be counterintuitive that you would send it out to the ones within 250 and say that's sufficient, and not the ones within 250, and also all the other members in the PUD. Thank you.
Any question? I have a question.
Certainly. Mr. Cooney, if you could, forgive me, Mr. Kilburg, just, I need to clarify, I made an error in my statement earlier, the PUD extends north to Glen Eagle, not to Fargo.
Glen E.
Glen Eagle, north to Glen Eagle, not north to Fargo.
So it's, so the area that people know, that Glen Eagle drive then is really, it's just Boston Market?
Correct.
The Eye Doctor?
Correct.
And including Home Depot?
Okay.
Yes.
The, the PUD.
That's, that makes sense.
Wait a second, John, let's, if, Mr. DeCruy could, could. Then, then Mr. Kilburg will have the floor.
Yeah, that's a whole different story.
I don't, I don't think that's correct, I think it goes all the way to.
I just looked at the map on page 95 of the committee of the whole. Ninety-six.
And that, that map, I believe, is highlighting the, the subject property, I wasn't trying to show the whole PUD in that, in that.
I have now aired twice. I will turn my microphone off. Alderman Kilburg, you have the floor, forgive me if you're interrupting.
No, no, I was just gonna say the same thing, yeah.
Do you have the letter that was actually sent to those residents with you?
It should be in the packet, one second.
Could you read that?
Pardon?
Alderman Kilburg, that was for the special use application. That was because the applicant had made a application for the special use on the assumption that the text of the PUD would be approved. So the city sent out or requires property owners within 250 feet of the subject property, and actually it was of the condominium building, not the unit, I understand.
So that applies to the second part of this motion, not the first part?
Yes, it does.
Yes, you do, excuse me.
Well, I think it would apply to the first part, because the first part goes to amending the entire PUD, not just the 250, or just not the area affected with that particular unit in affecting the 250-feet perimeter of that unit, but it's going for the entire 40-acre PUD.
Alderman Kilburg?
Mr. Cooney, could you read that letter?
I, I don't have the letter, I'm sorry.
Do we have?
Do you have the letter?
Do we have what was sent?
We've never seen the letter.
Was there, Dave, was there a letter sent?
I don't have it with me, I can grab it if needed, but the, there were.
One notice was published in the Daily Herald advertising both the amendment to the PUD and the request for the special use for this location. That same notice was then mailed to, to all property owners within 250 feet of this parcel. So it was not mailed to all of the property owners in the PUD, but within 250 feet of that particular parcel.
So essentially, what did the le, the letter state?
It stated that there was going to be a public hearing before the plan commission on those two requests, and that there was a special use specific to this, this parcel.
How much detail did it go into as it related to the special use?
It stated that there was an amendment to the PUD to amend exhibit seven, it cited the ordinance number to allow tattoo parlors as a special use, and then a, a special use for a tattoo shop at that location.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman Simoni?
Can we ignore this first one and still vote on the second one independent if, I mean, do we need a text amendment to begin with?
Yes, because a special use without it means nothing.
Okay, but the, the applicant came before the plan commission with the current text right now in our code or whatever, right? So they came, they applied to change this.
Correct.
If we don't do anything, the next applicant would have to do the same thing, right?
That's correct.
So we, do we really need to address the first part of this?
Because the PUD does not allow this use either as a permitted or as a special use.
Okay, so the applicant came to change that first and then?
Exactly.
Apply, then the secondary?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. And just to, excuse me, go ahead. Go ahead.
I, I just, I'm, I'm, again, I'm in total support of a, of a, my earlier words, but I have, I do have concern now with the entire PUD not being notified of this change, if it goes for me, so I, I can't support that without allowing, making sure that everybody had been notified. Not that my vote would change somewhere, change or not change on a roll, but I just can't, with good conscience, support it without notice being given to all those tenants, unit owners, whoever owns those, those properties, so. I mean, that's, thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome. And just to clarify, Alderman Cummings, the, the boundary of the PUD is to West Dundee now.
You're wrong again.
It's the rail. That's what the clerk just told me, what the hell, man. Mr. Cummings, then Mr. Storm.
I'm, I'm suddenly quite uncomfortable with the, with the lack of, with what I perceive to be a lack of notification to everybody that would be affected by this PUD that is quite a bit larger than, than I expected previously. I know we're calling this a text amendment, this isn't an extra apostrophe, this isn't a misspelling of a word, this is a pretty big deal, and this is a very big PUD, and right now, I have to vote no on this first motion, simply until I'm comfortable that everyone has been notified. Thank you.
To Mr. Cummings' point, I will make a suggestion based on my conference with the city attorney, and my suspicion is, based on everyone's thoughts at this stage, an option remains that this council can remand this matter back, not just back to the plan commission, but back to the very beginning. Based on some of the comments made, based on some of the information shared by city attorney Radovich and others, there seems to be some uncomfortableness with respective notification of all property owners, so, I mean, the, the motion's on the floor, but again, that's an option as well, so.
Would tabling the motion be equivalent to remanding it all the way back to the beginning?
Tabling it, I would recommend remanding, because tabling, we're gonna have to bring it back at a.
Tabling only delays it to a date certain, it has no substantive effect.
Could you explain to us what remanding actually does?
Well, I think it's really to indicate that the petition is unacceptable, that, I suppose you could, I think if you, if you deny the, David, I want to make sure on this, if, if you were to deny the first part of the motion for the text amendment that would not foreclose this applicant to reapply if another text amendment was made appropriately and, and approved by the city, I think what is, the, the one-year prohibition from reapplying is based upon your special use application, the actual application for the use on a specific property, but not for, applying for the text change. Everybody with me on that?
No.
Okay. So I think the, you know, the, the effect of denying the text amendment would throw this back, starting over again.
Mr. Brown, anything else you'd like to?
So we would be effectively saying, excuse us, but the council believes the city staff made a mistake by not notifying everybody within the whole PUD, please go back to the beginning, and if the people want to resubmit it, this time we'll appropriately notify everybody within the affected PUD.
Yeah, it's a two-part process, one would be amendment to a designated area of that PUD, and probably define that, is it, is it that, those pods that include the area between Glen Eagle, is it Glen Eagle?
We was at.
And. And Fabian and Bentry and Randall? That's step one. And step two then is a special use for a designated location.
But you're saying if we just plain turn down the motion on the table...
The text, it's over with because...
But it could be resubmitted tomorrow and the city would presumably handle it slightly differently than they did the first time.
Well, it could be resubmitted in a different form, but yes.
Why would it have to be a different form?
Because I think for one thing, the application that was made by these applicants described property more than what they owned in the... in the application, which was orally modified at the plan commission hearing indicating exactly what was being requested for a special use. I think there was some discussion about whether it was a full unit or a half unit, so that would have to be appropriately amended and revised.
But the request for the text change could be resubmitted immediately?
Correct.
Because that's independent of the property at question.
That's correct.
And then the city could proceed to notify the members of the PUD, the commercial PUD, and handle that part of it independently. This in some sense should have been sec... two separate issues from day one.
Yes.
Yes.
Well, I think it was at the inception. Somehow it merged either at the plan commission or at the cow, I'm not sure.
Thank you.
Mr. Simontian, then Alderman Flanagan?
Um, now my... now my opinion is, uh, it goes back to the plan commission and the appropriate area is notified and we start... start all over again. But I also don't think that the applicant should be penalized to have to reapply and repay any fees or go through their processes since it was, if it's an issue of, um, uh, we weren't... we didn't appropriately notify the proper area that...
Well, just about... about that, I took a look at the list. So as I see it, Home Depot is the southernmost property in the PUD. They're on that list, they got notified. We know that your property was notified, you're the northeasternmost bound... property in there, and if we're sticking in the two-hundred-and-fifty feet, I'm sure Boston Market's on that list, I just don't recognize the name and Petco as well.
But the PUD goes all the way up to the railroad tracks. Right.
That's what they're telling us.
Yeah, it doesn't stop at Glen Eagle.
Gotcha. All right, stop, yep, got it. Okay.
And that's my concern.
That's not in this map on page ninety-six.
And that's my concern.
Alderman, that we have not let all those other people know and I'm really uncomfortable voting for that.
Alderman Flanagan, excuse me, Alderman Simontian?
I... I just wanna... I just wanna defend the applicant a little bit here. Regardless of what we do, I don't think that he or she should be penalized for... okay, for, you know, waiting another year or something.
Yeah, that may be an administrative determination rather than something that this council has to address.
Okay. Fair enough. If you've already addressed it, that's fine.
Alderman Flanagan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just... so we would not... it would not behoove us to remove the motion as it's stated. We would continue addressing the motion the way it stands.
Well, you could... the motioner and the seconder could withdraw the motion and the second, and new motion could be offered to remand this back.
I think that would...
I think the more... Excuse me, Mayor. I think the most... the appropriate thing is to... to take an action on this motion. You've got a motion to...
You could vote it down as well and then offer a separate motion.
Vote this down and then you would...
I just don't want them or anyone to feel that they're... we're just voting it down and for them not to be able to once again...
No, you... you could...
Do whatever's necessary to accomplish.
You could take a vote on this motion to deny the text amendment and have a direction to staff to reinitiate a text amendment. I mean, that's something that this city council is authorized to do, is to make recommendations to the plan commission to conduct hearings on amendments to the zoning ordinance. You've done that before and usually at staff's bequest or in some cases from property owners such as the one here tonight. So that's within your purview.
Would they have to in any way add anything to the existing motion?
No.
No.
Thank you.
To obfuscate is quite the art, is it not, Mr. Storm?
Yes, I might just say one or two things on this issue.
To do that?
You didn't answer that.
One lawyer to another.
I... I understand, Mr. Spones, and believe me, I think there should not be a penalty for the applicant. However, I wanna be very clear that the applicant filed the appropriate petition, which was to make an amendment based upon submitting a preliminary plat to amend the PUD. And quite frankly, somewhere in the city staff planning, this changed to a proposed text amendment and a special use for a special... a petition for a special use, which did not exist and still doesn't exist tonight. There is no ability to file a petition for a special use for a tattoo parlor in this particular PUD because it's not provided for. And this thing should have never got past the plan commission on that stage. The ordinance that is controlling, and Mr. Cooney tried to make these points to the plan commission and made them last week, is very clear about what you have to do in order to amend this ordinance. Because PUD zoning is sort of contract zoning, even though we don't wanna say that, but it was a... an agreement that resulted from an annexation agreement. And the ordinance itself is very specific about how you amend it. And you don't amend it by a text amendment. You amend it by the applicant coming in and applying as though they were going through the PUD process. And the reason you do that is so that everybody can consider what you're all now having difficulty with, which is at the time that this was enacted, there were very, very specific and very narrow uses which were permitted. That Exhibit Seven takes the existing B-two uses and then excludes a whole bunch of them. So even the... at that time, you had an underlying B-two zoning district, all those uses were excluded, except for very specific ones that were allowed. If you look at the character of what was excluded and you look at the character of what is being proposed as a possible special use, they're totally inconsistent. And that's one of the things you would address if this were properly before you, is whether or not the proposed use, the proposed special use, is consistent with the other permitted uses within that district. Now, there is a B-five district and I guess somewhere there are B-five uses and certainly within those B-five uses, Mr. Gillen can apply for a... a special use. But that isn't what was provided for in this PUD and as Mr. Cooney has stressed several times and we stressed last week, our clients purchased their properties based upon the existing zoning and the existing PUD zoning, which we believe can be amended only by that process. Your own ordinances also say that. So... and... and while I understand that this would create a burden for the applicant, it also creates a burden for our clients who have gone through this process, who are majority business owners, who are now hearing that this process ought to start over. So I think what should happen respectfully is we would be asking the city council to take a vote on the... whether or not this amendment should pass, and it clearly should not, and we'd ask that you vote it down. Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Storm, just for devil's advocacy purposes, is not the nature of a special use incongruous to permitted uses already on the books?
No, I... no, I would totally...
And I wouldn't agree with that proposition either. No, in fact, it... they are a conditional... a conditional form of permitted use. Certain conditions that use should be... she had, and I think the courts in Illinois have... have made that clear, certainly in the last decade. And so I think it used to be viewed that special uses, you really had to go over a lot of hurdles and I think there's been some adjustments by the court to make them more administrative in their processing.
But the city of Geneva holds up special uses as an extra hurdle.
Sure.
Sure.
Yes, but the... I would submit, and I think Mr. Radovich is absolutely correct in terms
of the governing law, that the special use, if it's a permitted use within that district, that requires what everybody wants is to have to go through that application process. But I would still submit that special use has to be otherwise somewhat consistent with the other permitted uses within that district. And... and what we're trying to drive at is that what was specifically excluded, for example, were clubs and lodges, taverns, community centers, exterminating shops, monument sales, there were all sorts of businesses which would normally be permitted within a B-two business district, which this PUD excluded, said were not going to be permitted. And did not say, for example, that, yes, you could come in and apply to get a use for a news agency through the special use process. So in the face of that, you would be now saying, whoops, calling out from any other... the only other special use that is allowed in this ordinance had to do with an elder care facility. You would be creating a brand-new class of a single special use within this PUD for a tattoo parlor, something that I would submit to you is completely inconsistent with the character of the uses that are on this exhibit. That's the point.
Mr. Storm, if I may, and I'm certain somebody will chime in, I'm sure.
You're wrong.
I apologize, Mayor, for interrupting you.
No, no, I'm kidding. No, it's good. Um... And, you know, put me on a short leash here, Mr. Radovich, but there seems to be... the contention is, in the most positive way possible, that from city attorney Radovich and perhaps members of the council, that we should not consider this matter because there may have been... it may have been advanced in error. Your advice is irrespective of the error, consider the matter and kill it. Are we not still just exacerbating the error by considering the matter altogether?
I don't think so. I mean, I think there's a...
An error works in your favor or not?
There's a motion, just because what's proposed is erroneous, so that's a reason, I think, to vote it down. I... you know, the... otherwise, the discussion about restarting the process, I'm not sure that you ever could do this anyway, even if this were a properly filed petition and it was properly noticed and properly before, because it's inconsistent with the... the character. But I understand your point and Chuck and I have had a discussion about this.
But we're not there, Peter. I mean, I... I think it's a procedural issue tonight and I think that's what I'm trying to address to the council.
That's fair.
Is to... to take an action on the first motion dealing with the amendment to this PUD.
Alderman Bruno, then Alderman Simontian.
Mr. Storm, um, the terms you used, wholly inconsistent with the character there. So the previous tenant of that parcel was a tanning salon, is that right?
Right.
Okay, so these are individuals coming in to augment the aesthetic of their persons. It seems that a tattoo parlor is exactly that. So I... I'm not entirely convinced that it is wholly inconsistent unless you're identifying we like tattoo parlors or we like tanning salons but not tattoo parlors.
Well, first of all, I don't think that the ordinance says anything about tanning salons. They didn't apparently believe they needed to apply for a special use and it isn't called out separately as a special use. I don't know enough about the underlying... I don't have your underlying B-five uses, but I don't think there was a requirement for an independent special use. Whereas your... your B-five district, which this is not, but which the other properties does allow for tattoo parlors, but only as a special use. So the distinction here is that I don't believe you have to apply for a special use to operate a tanning. But I... whether they were in compliance or not is not the issue that is before the council. What is... what's before the council is the idea that you could amend this ordinance to add a particular special use, which is not consistent with the language of the permitted uses in the ordinance.
Okay, would there have been, Mr. Attorney, the use as a tanning salon? You probably don't have all the text in front of you, but would there be... should there have been any special public hearing for a... or maybe, I don't know?
I can't... I can't answer that, Corey. Maybe Mr. DeGroot can, 'cause I do not have either the list of uses of that PUD or the B-five.
Okay, not to put you on the spot. You did not... I did not have you prepare for that.
It's okay. I don't know the answer offhand. I would have to look up the old B-two zoning, but I'm sure that salons were a listed use and that's probably how it was permitted, maybe not a tanning salon specifically, but salons are commonly listed as a permitted use in our commercial districts, so...
So it... thank you. I... yeah, so it kinda comes back to me, and I don't know where this is gonna go in terms of remanding it back to review, but as long as we're still talking about it. That distinction, you know, a tanning salon which was permitted, which, I don't know, didn't seem to be a problem, seems to be exactly the same thing as a tattoo parlor, which comes down to a judgment on the character of that, a personal judgment on the character of tattoo parlors. You know, if I had... if me and my neighbors owned some homes and our esteemed mayor decided to rent a home next to us, I mean, we'd probably all have a lot of reasons that we wouldn't want to have Kevin living next to us, but...
I support you on that, by the way.
That's what it comes down to me. I understand the property rights, the majority ownership, but I'm failing to find that distinction that we can justify saying, tanning salon, cool, tattoo parlor, not cool.
I agree with you, but that's why I made the point. I don't think that that's... that could be the tooth fairy, it could be tutu makers, it could be whatever you want. The whole question in my mind and in Tom's is can I change the rules on a property despite the fact that sixty percent of the owners aren't... haven't requested it, they haven't requested the special use and they're opposing the special use? I'm not focusing at all on the specific inclusion, you know? I think that we make too much of that in this specific instance. The issue that we're getting at about, you know, should we exclude this type of use throughout the PUD is a... like a whole separate discussion. I think I say I understand your point from that context, but for this specific owner-occupied thing, it's different.
Alderman Simontian?
Um, I'm not an attorney, but I play one occasionally in the shower when no one's watching, and I always win my cases, by the way. I... I think we're... I think it's a procedural issue here at this point. It's not a courtroom and I don't have any idea, Mr. Storm, and all due respect, all, you know, item seven, all the rest of this, that's for our staff to take care of and... but when it gets to this point here, I think the question at hand is, did... was the procedure fumbled and do we need to address the procedure properly and maybe go back a couple of pegs and make sure it's done? In my opinion, you know, everybody's notified properly, goes through the proper procedures, et cetera. 'Cause I was even... even last week's meeting, this was not a two-part issue. This was a one-part issue that we voted on. And now we're voting on a two-part issue that didn't even come through the cow. So, you know, I think we just need to vote on this and then make a decision whether we remand it back or whatever as a group and stick to the procedural part of this equation versus trying to litigate it. Thank you.
Alderman Marks?
Just, you know, I... Tom, I agree with you. I think, you know, we need to do the vote here now and then maybe at a... at a future cow meeting, put that on to discuss reprim... remanding it back to plan commission. I think right now, we've muddied the water so much that maybe we need some time to just think about that and if we, you know, do the procedure vote now, 'cause we know something happened incorrectly somewhere along the line.
No.
And then bring it up at a cow meeting whether we should discuss it. whether we should discuss it, I think it'll leave everybody have a little bit more clearer...
Yeah, and just, just the amendment, or, excuse me, the motion on the floor is to consider the text amendment to the PUD, ordinance number 89-48. That's the motion.
And then we can do whatever, we can discuss it after that, that's fine. Let's call the question.
Question's been called. Everyone understands the motion on the floor? The motion is to consider ordinance number 2014-26, amending Exhibit 7, permitted uses for the commercial tract of ordinance number 89-48.
But it excludes the terms granting a special use to allow the tattoo shop.
Correct, that's why I stopped where I did, exactly. Mr. Clerk? Simple majority is required to pass. Ron Singer?
Nay.
Chuck Brown?
Aye.
Mike Bruno?
Aye.
Did I hear two ayes? Just one, okay. Don Cummings?
Nay.
Dorothy Flanagan?
Nay.
Dean Kilburg?
Nay.
Craig Maladra?
Nay.
Richard Marx?
Nay.
Mary Sino?
Nay.
Tom Simonian?
Nay.
The motion is defeated. Eight nay votes, two aye votes. The floor is now open. Clarification? There's nothing busy, we can advance to, I'll give everybody eight dramatic seconds, otherwise we advance to Item 13. We advance to Item 13, closed session on semi-annual review of closed session minutes. I'll entertain a motion to so proceed. Motion by...
Second.
What the hell's your name again? Maladra, seconded by Sino. There is action to be taken following the closed session. Roll call votes in order. Ron Singer?
Aye.
Chuck Brown?
Aye.
Mike Bruno?
Aye.
Don Cummings?
Aye.
Dorothy Flanagan?
Aye.
Dean Kilburg?
Aye.
Craig Maladra?
Aye.
Richard Marx?
Aye.
Mary Sino?
Aye.
Tom Simonian?
Aye.
We'll be back shortly, ladies and gentlemen. Voice vote sufficient, Mr. City Attorney? Returning the open session?
Yes.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
We're back in open session, I trust there's a motion to be offered?
I do have a motion to approve or release of the city council for the session minutes as listed on the, dated September 2nd, 2014.
Motion by Marks to release the minutes as referenced in the memorandum of 9214, seconded by Alderman Simone, Ian.
Sino. First Sino, according to Mr. Kilburg.
A voice, excuse me, a roll call vote, please, Mr. Clerk. Ron Singer?
Aye.
Chuck Brown?
Aye.
Mike Bruno?
Aye.
Don Cummings?
Aye.
Dorothy Flanagan?
Aye.
Dean Kilburg?
Aye.
Craig Maladra?
Aye.
Richard Marx?
Aye.
Mary Sino?
Aye.
Tom Simonian?
Aye.
Motion passes, and any new business, or?
I just want to talk about Hunger Action Month is this September, and Dean and I have the Illinois Food Bank in the Third Ward, and we met with them the other day, and we're orange on Thursday.
Those of you that haven't had a chance to sign up, the city has an opportunity to volunteer at the food bank, I believe, the first Saturday of October. So if you haven't had a chance to sign up to put in a couple hours in support of the Northern Illinois Food Bank, as well as all those in, in need in Northern Illinois, there's still, still a chance to do so. I think there's still, still a few openings.
Yep, 9, 9 to 11:30.
Okay. And do you, is there a email that was sent out, or? Let Sherry know.
Could you just let Sherry know?
Oh, just let Sherry know? Okay. Thank you.
Anything else? Motion to adjourn by Alderman Brown? Oh, Festival of the Bees, Festival of the Vines coming up.
Festival of the Vine.
Thank you. Mr. Nodal to my left here told me to say that again.
Delicious, delicious Geneva restaurant food.
Indeed, so, be fun.
Gets pretty sharp when he gets a chair.
Isn't that amazing? Motion to adjourn is in order.
Second.
Motion by Marks, seconded by?
Cummings.
Cummings, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.